All right. Michael, are we good to go? Okay. Thank all of you again for being here tonight. It is six o'clock and we call to order the February meeting of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners. We're already into the second month of our new year and time continues to move along and some of the issues we've been facing, we've talked about some things today even as it relates to the hospital and other goings on over the last year and how it seemed like some of these things just got started, but we've been living with them for a year now. And thank all of you for participating and thank you for your patience as we have gone through the last year and hopefully as we move through 21, this will turn into a happier new year as we go forward. So, thank all of you again for your presence. I do want to mention again, we have our camera and it presenters tonight. We ask that you please speak directly into the microphone so that the folks back home who are watching on Facebook or YouTube will be able to follow this meeting and the comments that are being made and recognitions that'll take place as we move through our agenda tonight. So, thank all of you again for your participation and at this time, I'm going to ask Sheriff Seabolt if he would do our invocation for us tonight and then we'll have our pledge of allegiance. Will you please stand?
Let's all pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you today to thank you for your many blessings. Lord, we ask for your wisdom and discernment so that all the decisions made here tonight are made in your favor. Lord, we ask that you comfort and heal those who are infected with this virus. Lord, we ask that you lead us in the direction you wish this county to travel. In closing, Lord, we ask for your blessings to pour upon this county, fill us with humility so that we always increase in your presence, decrease in our own presence. With all this said, Lord, we ask that you be with us as we meet. Let all the decisions here shine upon this county and we'll give you all the honor, praise, and glory in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Sheriff.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. All right, we do have some special recognitions tonight that we want to recognize and we had on our agenda originally three positions from the sheriff's department who were retiring. They represented sixty-eight and a half years of service to the citizens of this county. That means they served with more than one sheriff and still here and serving the citizens of this county, helping to keep us all safe. But two of them have called since later this afternoon to let us know they would not be able to be here tonight. I know one in particular has a COVID-related illness in the family, so we want to remember them tonight, but I'm going to ask the commissioners to join us out front. We, as we recognize these two individuals tonight for their service to the county and one, one that has a little special, special meaning for me and brings back a lot of memories of my years on this board and folks that I've worked with and have helped and served this county for these years. So, I'm going to ask our board to meet us out front. Well, we recognize every month, but we recognize employees that have served the citizens of this county in a number of ways and some of these, all of these are important to the county and to our citizens and as they have, again, law enforcement, as they literally put their life on the line to protect us. The first individual tonight that we want to recognize is Mr. Bob McDuffie. Now, Bob McDuffie went on the Randolph County, the Piedmont Triad Regional Water Authority back in 1986 and he is the longest-serving board appointee in this county. And I want to say to all the citizens here tonight and those that are watching on Facebook or YouTube, no one has ever stood up for Randolph County and represented the citizens of this county in so many different ways as Bob McDuffie has done. So, he has served for twenty, forty, pardon me, thirty-six years on this board, thirty-two years on this board. Fourteen and twenty, thirty-four years on the Water Authority Board, to get my math right. And it's not just, Bob was president and CEO of Randolph Electric here in Ashboro when he was appointed to this board, to the Water Authority Board. That is a public utility and the Water Authority is a public utility. So, he not only brought the knowledge and experience of a public utility to the Water Authority from its very beginning, but if it's fish and wildlife, if it's riparian rights downstream for people using the water, it's so many, in every aspect that the Water Authority deals with, he has knowledge and ability and experience in that area, more than any other member that's ever served on that board. And there was a lot of work that went on before the Water Authority was officially formed in 1986. And Bob was the one who hired Frank here, who became the executive director. Some people call him John, some people call him Frank. His name is John Frank Kime. But at the time, Frank was the city manager in Liberty here in Randolph County. So, that made it a natural fit for us, joining the Water Authority with the likes of Greensboro, High Point, Jamestown, Randleman, and Archdale. And we had a Randolph County person to become the executive director. And Frank served since, from 1986 to 2012. So, that's twenty-six years. That's a little quicker. So, but again, there's a lot of work that went on even before we were, the Water Authority was officially reform, formed. And also here tonight is Greg Florrie, who is the current executive director of the Water Authority and who replaced Frank when he retired. So, that means since 1986, the Water Authority's had two executive directors and both have served the citizens of this county and the region with the finest and the most quality service that anybody could expect. Louis Dorsett is here tonight. He is the current chairman of the Piedmont Triad Regional Water Authority Board of Trustees. He is also mayor pro tem of the city of Archdale. So, we have a front row here of some folks, but we are here specifically tonight to recognize Bob McDuffie. So, Bob, how about standing up here with me? This is a resolution that this board is going to vote to approve tonight. Actually, we've already, because we was going to do this last month, but you couldn't make it.
No problem.
Not a problem. So, we're taking precautions to not expose. Whereas the Piedmont Triad Regional Water Authority was incorporated on December the 4th, 1986 with the purpose of constructing and operating the Randleman Lake project as a water source for Archdale, Greensboro, High Point, Jamestown, Randleman, and Randolph County for the 21st century. And whereas the joint governmental agreement adopted by the member governments allowed for the appointment of representatives to the Board of Directors of the Authority, which convened its first meeting on December the 9th, 1986. And whereas at the time, the Randolph County Board of Commissioners, upon recommendation by Chairman Darrell Frye, appointed President of Randolph Electric Membership Corporation, Bob L. McDuffie, as the county's first representative to the Authority. Whereas Mr. McDuffie's thirty-four years of continuous service gives him the distinction of being the longest-serving county commissioner appointee in Randolph County history and has announced his retirement. And whereas during his years of service, Mr. McDuffie has provided, provided his expertise and a wavering commitment to the success of the Piedmont Triad Regional Water Authority by serving in a leadership capacity on numerous committees and a term as board chairman, by exhibiting invaluable diplomacy during the construction of the Randleman Lake Reservoir and the John F. Kime Water Treatment Facility, and by contributing to the betterment of others. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Randolph County Board of Commissioners acknowledges the steadfast commitment of Bob L. McDuffie to the Piedmont Triad Regional Water Authority and its mission for the citizens of the Piedmont Triad of North Carolina. Be it further resolved that the Commissioners express their sincere gratitude for the many years of service Mr. McDuffie has given to the citizens of Randolph County and offer him their best wishes in his retirement. God bless you, Bob. Thanks for everything, buddy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to be a charter member of the board. And you're exactly right, there was a lot of work went on before the board was ever formed and you certainly were a big, big part of that. I appreciate the opportunity you gave me and I appreciate the opportunity that the rest of the board gave me to serve all these years. I don't think I know but one of you personally anymore. It's been a long time, a very enjoyable time, a very good experience and I'm sure I'm going to get roasted up pretty bad here in a minute, so I'll just thank you all again for this great honor. I appreciate it very much. And I'll turn it over to... Well, Mr. Chairman, I never, this is before politics got exciting. I never been on Facebook and I never been on YouTube, but I'm still not going to change what I'm going to say. You're right, Bob, Bob was on the Personnel Committee when I interviewed and along with Cheryl Shaw in Randleman and Joe Patterson in High Point. And we met up at Shaw Furniture in Randleman and I tried to do my homework a little bit. I'd had the late Senator Russell Walker to call Joe Patterson and try to put in a good word and Cheryl started off the meeting and then once he found out that I'd gone to school over in Durham, he let me know how he went to Chapel Hill and how it was a lot better school and all that. Bob kind of sitting over in the corner, looking kind of like the cat that swallowed the canary. And then all of a sudden, out of the blue, he didn't ask any questions at all, he just said, "I understand you're a hard-headed SOB." And I'm pretty certain that he didn't use the initials, as I remember. And I said something to the effect of, "Well, you know, I don't, I don't give up easily and I like to see things through and I don't mind standing kind of for what I'm in favor of, believe in and, you know, I don't mind winning and giving up and all that." So, I guess you could kind of say, "I'm hard-headed." Well, over the thirty-some years that you mentioned, one of the things I did, I added up, we went through three governors, six colonels were the core engineers, five directors of the Division Environmental Management, twelve different city managers, two county managers, fourteen mayors, and I didn't even count up the city council people. In the middle of all that, you know, I'd have to say, "Bob, I need you to go check on so-and-so because I think their meeting with so-and-so and I'm not certain they're out to help us." And during that whole time, no matter what we need to do, and I understand the political capital that you spent getting us going, but every time we needed somebody in the trench, Bob's one of those guys that I kidded him. I said, "Don't, nobody ever calls you until the ox is in the ditch." And then when you need somebody to get it out, that's, that's who we called. And so, Bob, from one hard head to another, appreciate it.
I want to just say, the new guy, I guess, it's about ten years I replaced Don Hancock from Archdale. And when I came on, I knew very little about the Water Authority or what was going on. I was a newbie and these two kind of took me under the wing and Bob especially and showed me the ropes because folks, his heart is Randolph County. And, you know, we're, we're up there partners with Greensboro and High Point, but Bob, Bob was always in Randolph County's corner and he wanted me to know that. And it was, it was, it was a blessing is what it is. But I want to borrow a saying from one of my favorite movies, A Loon's Some Dove. Bob's a man of vision. He knows that this is not just for us, just not just for your children, it's for the next and the next. And he knows that and he sees that. And it's a rare quality here in this county to have men like that. And I'm blessing and thankful that I've been able to work with them. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just don't tell them everything.
Nah, I won't tell them everything. Just really to reiterate, I mean, I've only been with the Water Authority a short time, but from the moment I've been there, Bob has been a great asset and a resource for Randolph County and even though he's retiring, I know he's still going to have Randolph County's back and he'll be there as an asset for me if I ever need anything from him. I really appreciate it and appreciate the Commissioners for appointing him and helping us out.
Well, last month, we did appoint Bob's replacement, Dennis May, who was also an employee of Randolph Electric.
Yeah, go ahead. I have one more word I'd like to say about him.
All right. So, we do keep that continuity with the public utility process. Bob and Frank and I went down last Thursday afternoon and spent an hour or so with Dennis and all we did was talk, tell stories and how we, how we ever got to this point, but we have a good replacement, so... No, we didn't tell them all, but did you want to have one of...
Well, yeah, I want to thank you all for appointing Dennis May. He's going to make you a great representative, I promise you that. If he don't, let me know.
One more, Bob. Here is, here's a plaque that you can hang on your wall. With great admiration and appreciation, the Randolph County Board of Commissioners recognizes Bob L. McDuffie for thirty-four years of service to the citizens of Randolph County as a member of the Piedmont Triad Regional Water Authority and with the distinction of becoming the longest-serving county commissioner appointee in the history of Randolph County, presented, and this says January the 4th, 2021. God bless you and this is a copy of your resolution out here too. So, if you want to shake hands with these folks up here too. Thank you. All right. Sheriff, you want to go and recognize our officer tonight? As I said, we are, we are really indebted to these folks who did their time and their life almost to, to this county and we got a lot of them here and we never thanked them enough for what they did.
This is a very much an honor for me to be up here representing the sheriff's office with David Carter. I used to help David a lot when I was a trooper, running calls with him, but Corporal John David Carter began his career at the Randolph County Sheriff's Office in July of 1997 on active reserves. He was hired full-time as a deputy in January of 1998, assigned to the Randolph County Detention Center. In July of 1999, he transferred to the Patrol Division in October of 2002. After a series of volatile calls, he voluntarily transferred back to the Detention Center. In January of 2006, David was then transferred back to Patrol Division and was promoted to corporal in July of 2009. Corporal Carter served his remainder of his career in the Patrol Division and retires February 1st, 2021. Corporal Carter is known by his peers for his tenacity and willingness to answer calls for service, to always back up his fellow law enforcement officers, for taking the time to get to know the community and the recidivists that we often deal with, for taking extra moment with citizens to ensure that their issues are resolved and their concerns are heard. Corporal Carter is an incredible asset to the Randolph County Sheriff's Office and to the citizens of Randolph County. While we can easily name the next qualified corporal, we can never replace David Carter and the passion he has as a deputy sheriff. Through his career, Corporal Carter has trained a multitude of deputies in the Patrol Division. He has helped shape many young deputies and has influenced the culture of the Patrol Division. David has been a mentor to many and a friend to all. He will be missed as an instrumental part of the Randolph County Sheriff's Office. In retirement, David plans to remain on active reserves in the Sheriff's Office so he can continue to share his experience and knowledge with others. Personally, he plans to spend quality time with his twelve grandchildren and family. Corporal David Carter is recognized for twenty-three years of faithful service to the citizens of Randolph County. And David, I personally thank you for your service.
Just want to let you all know, it's been an honor to serve the sheriff's office for twenty-three years. It's actually been an adventure. I have enjoyed working with four different sheriffs. And I hate to leave, but it's time to go. That's, that's all.
David, this is, this is presented to you in grateful appreciation to Corporal John David Carter, recognition of twenty-three years of service, February 1st, 2021, by the Randolph County Board of Commissioners. God bless you, safe travels and thank for service to this county.
Thank you.
God bless you.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. You want to shake hands with these folks? All right. Thank all of y'all for bearing with us through those presentations and I said, there's so much history goes into the Water Authority and I'll just pass one little thing along. When we broke ground up there for the construction of the lake itself, that didn't start in 1986 either. There was still a lot of work to be done and permits to be had and all that, but Bruce Moore was the mayor of Randleman at the time and he did the invocation at the groundbreaking for the start of digging or construction of the lake. And he closed out his prayer by saying, "And dear Lord, don't let it take as long to build this lake as it did to get the permit." And, because I think you can actually go back to the 1920s and find mention of the Randleman Reservoir being built as a flood project on the Deep River in Randolph County, North Carolina. And we started it in 1986. So, a lot of work that went into the process and again, nobody's ever stood up for Randolph County the way Bob McDuffie's done, so we thank you. Okay. Do we have any public comments tonight? All right. Consent agenda and y'all, y'all free to go. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
We're going to make you safe.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to vote on the resolution for Mr. McDuffie first?
Yes, yes. I have a motion to approve the resolution. I make that motion. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, our consent agenda here, anyone who wishes to pull an item for individual discussion.
I don't wish to pull any, I don't wish to pull anything off. I want to clarify one thing in my mind. The timber receipts?
Yes.
That came in, is that, is that amount designated for schools? Just as a clarifying, clarifying.
Yes.
Is that county and city or just county?
It's a split.
Pardon?
Based on ADM.
Both, based on ADM, right?
Okay. Just, just wondering, just want to clarify what that was.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, would you, would you mind introducing Ms. Pam Brown here since she was wanting, wanted to come be present with us tonight just on item?
Yeah, Pam Brown is our latest appointment to the Randolph County Tourism Authority. She works for Hampton Inn in Archdale and we're almost neighbors up there, so Pam, we're glad to have you on the Tourism Authority aboard and wish you the very best. She represents the hotel motel industry as required on that Tourism Board. There are designated positions on the Tourism Board, including representatives from the Chambers of Commerce. Thank you, Commissioner Kidd.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Yes.
And your willingness to serve.
It's good to know and to see the folks that we appoint to the boards and we thank you for that. All right, I had a motion.
I'll make the motion to...
And I have a second.
Second.
Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no. And the consent agenda is approved. Our new business tonight and presenters here, our district attorney, Andy Gregson, is in our audience tonight. Andy and Rodney Trogdon, they're going to give us a report on our Safe Neighborhoods project. project.
Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners, good evening. I brought with me the U.S. Attorney directly behind me, Mr. Matt Martin. You know Rodney Trogdon, who's the director of the PSN Project. And I also brought Special Assistant U.S. Attorney Mary Ann Courtney. Mary Ann is one of my prosecutors, but she goes to work with the federal government. That was a part of the deal here with Project Safe Neighborhood. It's been a little over a year since I came and addressed you, I think, last time, and we're here to give you a status update of where we are and to thank you for your continued investment in this program. I will start out by saying to you, not to be melodramatic, but a week or so ago, if you watched the news, you saw that we had two people killed, shot to death with a rifle about 6:00 PM in a parking lot. And unfortunately, there was also a two-year-old baby shot. Thankfully, the baby looks like it's going to live. The two gentlemen who were shot anywhere between five and 15 times with a rifle are not going to. You'd be forgiven if you read that story and thought, well, that's Winston-Salem or High Point or Greensboro, but it's not. It's right here in Ashboro. And if we don't do the things that we are going to talk about for just a few minutes tonight with Project Safe Neighborhood, we're going to wake up and those headlines are going to be about Randolph County. Because those same people and those same influences are here. They've been here for a while, and this program is designed to deal with those people. So what I would say to you is, we have, unlike a lot of Project Safe Neighborhoods, we've continued on during the COVID-19 shutdowns. Matter of fact, we did a survey of the cases that Mr. Martin, his U.S. Attorney's Office, has assumed jurisdiction of. They've assumed more than 35 very major cases out of Randolph County. This is child pornographer traffickers. This is drug traffickers. This is violent felons caught carrying firearms. They are off our streets, and the federal government stepped in because of this formalized relationship, and they have taken these people off our streets and given them lengthy sentences where they need to be. We also are seeing an incredible sea change in the way information is exchanged among our agencies. I attended a meeting on Friday. It's almost two hours, and we had about 12 to 15 officers from agencies, every single agency in this county, including probation, juvenile services, and other people. And we were exchanging information across these lines about very dangerous people. People you've probably never heard of, people like the Ghostface Gangsters, who are responsible for numerous murders of law enforcement in this country. They're right here in Randolph County. Luckily, because we're sharing information with one another, we know who they are, we know who they're hanging out with, and we know what they're up to. And so, I sit there and watch for two hours as my law enforcement couldn't been prouder of getting out of the old ways of doing business. We're talking about these people, we're sharing information, we're tagging them, we're marking them. And we are not going to go to sleep on this issue. We're not going to become Guilford County. We're not going to become Forsyth County as long as I'm your DA. I'm not going to apologize for targeting these people, and I'm not going to make excuses for them. We're going to use every bit of the resources available to us to target them, give them a chance to change their life, and then if they don't, we're going to take them off the streets. We're going to remain focused on what law enforcement should be doing, and that's what we're supposed to be doing. So, I am here tonight. I'm done. I'm ready to answer questions when the others finish. But I want you to hear from the U.S. Attorney, Mr. Martin, and also from Rodney, about where we are going forward. Thank you so much, and I'm available in a few minutes if you need me to answer questions.
Thank you, Andy.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I could think of nothing more fitting than to have the people's elected representatives of government go from commending those who do right to talking about punishing those who do wrong, right? Because there's no higher calling for the government than public safety. And I would just echo what DA Gregson said. I would just add a couple of points. We've had a very challenging year in 2020 for law enforcement. Not only did we have the pandemic, but there were a variety of forces at work in society that just made it hard for the men and women who wear badges and carry guns to do their job. And I just want to commend Randolph County because we have continued during that time in this good work. Mr. Gregson mentioned the gun screenings and other coordination meetings. I think, and Rodney, I know you'll mention this, the details in a moment, I think we're scheduled next month in March to have another, what we call a call-in. And that's like the theatrical moment for this program. So there's all kinds of stuff that goes on behind the scenes. There's the blocking and tackling of sharing information, of figuring out, what does the data show us? Who is really moving toward committing these terrible crimes? Or who's done it? And who do we need to really be going after right now? And how can we get those folks into the federal jurisdiction where they, on average, get longer sentences for these crimes than in state jurisdiction? And of course, you save a little money at the county and also at the state level as well when that happens. But we've continued that and moving toward this call-in, it's really, it kind of epitomizes what PSN is all about. You bring in folks who are moving in the wrong direction, and you basically say, "We've made a commitment in this community to stop violent crime. You guys are either doing it or right on the precipice according to what the data says. And so, here's your chance. You're going to stop one way or the other. Either our law enforcement friends are coming after you. You're going to be on the top of the list. When it hits my office or Mr. Gregson's office, it's moving to the top. Or, there are a lot of community members in this, and you know, we do it in the, I guess it's the 911 Center over there, Emergency Management Center, and community members who want to help you. And see, we focus the helping hand resources, and it's not just a handout, it's a pull, step up. You have to make the decision you're going to leave this life, and then there are people in this community that love you to help you change. But one way or another, it's going to change. And we've seen the payoff here in Randolph County. So I just want to commend you for that. I also want to just mention something that's occasionally forgotten, and that is, when the federal government comes in and takes 35 guys, it's like throwing a big rock into a pond. There's this ripple effect, and we see it around the district from time to time. And I frankly love it when I hear it, because we'll get someone from the sheriff's office saying, "We got a jail call you need to hear." And they'll say, for example, well, this was actually, should I, I guess I can give an example. There was a guy that said, "Man, don't get caught with drugs in Salisbury." And that was because we had done a clean-out with some folks in Salisbury. And I'm waiting for Sheriff Seabolt to call and say, "You got to hear this one." Because when that word gets out, people say, "No, okay, the feds are here." And that's helpful. That helps what's going on on the ground. Mr. Gregson can call us, we can work together. And that's the kind of infrastructure we're trying to build. So I thank you again for your support. I'll also be around for questions once Rodney finishes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Commissioner. Real quickly, to kind of piggyback off what they have said, we have moved forward. We have met either virtually or in a social distancing environment and continued on, which is great, because it is about the communication. And so, we've continued that. My resources, it's my advisory committee, they're one and the same. We meet, as a matter of fact, we're meeting later this month. It's been a year this month that we had our first notification. You know, if it wasn't for COVID, we would have had another one by now because the momentum's there, and the buy-ins there from local law enforcement. But mentioning that first one, I'll give you a little bit of an update of what happened in our original 14, so to speak. Seven of them have successfully completed their probation and parole supervision. So that's half of them have successfully made it. I can tell you, I haven't been in probation for over 30 years, the revocation rate is about 35% on average. So, I'm a little over a third of getting revoked, so half successful is very good. There's two folks who have absconded supervision, which means they're gone, they've flown the court, probation has warrants on them. There's two who have significant charges. One is in jail, and one has been indicted and awaiting trial. Of course, with COVID, the court has been, had to slow down a little bit, so he's still waiting, but it's going to be done. We've had eight of the offenders have no pending charges, which is 57%, which is really good. We didn't pick a sweetheart group. There's not one in programs where you pick a sweetheart group, say, and have good numbers. That's not what this is about. We deal with the worst of the worst based on the data that we gathered and had UNCG analyze and tell us what our dynamic is in the county. And we're following up on it. Has it stopped at no? As Andy Gregson said earlier, we just had a shooting a few weeks ago. So it's not going to stop, but neither are we. And that's where your support and the local jurisdictions and the county's support comes in so vitally, because if not, we're fewer support, we can't keep doing it. And the relationships that we've made with the federal system and enhancing the relationships between law enforcement agencies and the county is the biggest thing. As I said, I worked in the county for 32 years in probation and never had a problem with the agency, but it's the first time I can remember in my lifetime that we've come together and talked about the same people, because we chase the same people most of the time. And unfortunately, you know, folks don't stay locally anymore. We've got some cases from Charlotte, we've got some folks from Montgomery County, we've got folks from Guilford County that are coming down. So they're coming from all over. They're a little bit more in the mode of moving around than what they used to be. But we still got to stay out in front of it, which is what we're doing. The next notification is tentatively set. We know things can change, but our goal is March 25th. So that's the next notification that we have. We've already targeted 15 individuals that we feel fit the program's criteria. I'll have to keep a check on those folks, because things change daily sometimes with these people, and make sure they're still available. We may have to adjust that, but right now, we're looking at another group of 14 to 15 offenders that we'll be calling in and hopefully have success with as we did with our first 14. Thank you.
Rodney, is our, how much publicity or knowledge are we getting out in the county? I know I've had a mother who called me about getting her son into this, into your program. I don't know the status of that right now, but are people knowing about it and recommending or sending people here, or you do it strictly as you know where the trouble is?
Yes. When I say that, is, you know, pre-COVID, we were getting the word out, we were doing articles in the paper and getting coverage, and we were meeting with the Randolph County Concerned Citizens Against Crime. We were meeting with them and sharing information and letting the communities know what was going on. Unfortunately, obviously, COVID has curtailed that, so we really haven't been able to do that. And even in our next notification, depending on where we're at with the COVID situation, it may have to be just the folks who need to be there. And I don't mean it negatively, we got to be safe. So, we would like to get more word out. And unfortunately, in that lady's situation, and she can always call me, her son probably needs to be in it, Mama's telling me that, but we'd have to check his record and see where he stands, because part of this is the carrot and the stick, as you know. The carrot is turn your life around, you'll be fine. The stick is if you don't, this is what's going to happen. And so, the penalty a lot of times is severe enough, whether it be going to the federal system or the maximum amount of state time to take and receive for continuing their crimes, that it motivates them to change. So, we would have to check that out, but it could be somebody we could put in the database that hopefully doesn't end up in the program down the road, but if he continues his life, then he may very well, and it may save his life.
This particular individual, he was getting out of prison, and she wanted to get him into a program so he wouldn't be a statistic back in there.
Yes, and that's one of the things that we actually do track, is folks coming out on post-release, because a lot of times the data that we deal with is what we have right here now, but there are folks pulling time that are going to get post-release. And we do, the two probation officers that we have assigned to the Project Safe Neighborhoods, they deal with the gang cases in the county. That's what they specialize in. And then, they help me track, because I don't have access to their database, folks coming out of prison on post-release. So more than likely, Chairman, what you're saying is that name has probably came up, and we'll probably just have to look and see if he's in the database from the original collection we did two years ago now, or we'll add him to the database and so we can start tracking it. But she would be worth her while to check with the probation officers to try to find something, if there is anything, because unfortunately, folks are meeting now, but everything's virtual. And it's, you know, if folks don't want to do right or they're using drugs, it's real easy to light that camera. So it makes it a more difficult task for our treatment providers and our probation and parole officers to keep on top of the individuals as much as they need to, to keep them in line best they can.
One more question. Are any of them a condition of parole?
Yes, sir. It's a general condition, and basically, they have to report as directed to their supervising officer, to any programs that are deemed fit or necessary. And sometimes, there are some older parole cases, you don't see a lot of them anymore, that may not have that verbiage in the parole agreement. If it is, then we can always request the parole commission to amend the parole agreement. Now, of course, the offender will have to, you know, agree to it, but we can make that happen.
So I'd just like to reiterate for the purpose of people who may be listening from home, if I understand correctly, we had 35 cases from Randolph County that faced federal charges because of the work together with Project Safe Neighborhoods.
Yes, ma'am. With the communication between the federal agencies and U.S. Attorney's Office, Mr. Martin here, and our law enforcement community, as well as the DA's office, they have found cases that fit the criteria for the federal system to take them. And so, that's where that came about. I know, in looking at it, if I recall correctly, I'm getting older now, there's been 15 cases adopted during COVID. And I say that because court systems have stopped in some instances and moved really slow. I think that's pretty good, to get that many cases adopted in the year that we faced. So again, it shows that we're moving. Now, we may not be moving as fast as we were, but we are moving.
Good. Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I had a quick question. So, and I can't remember whose part of the story this was, but on the, what do you call it, the call-in or whatever, when you have everybody there, and you give them a chance or choice, either, you know, go with federal prosecution, or there's people in the community here to help you. Who, I've had a couple of community members ask about that. Who do we contact? You or whoever? Do we put those people in touch with you if there are community organizations that aren't already involved? I mean, how do they step up and work with you if somebody decides to make the right decision?
Yes, sir. They can always contact me. That will be the central point of contact. I mean, now, if they find, you know, someone from the sheriff's department, someone from, like with Chairman, with him, you know, give them my number, you guys call me, whatever, and give me their information, and we'll get in touch with them. Because again, with COVID, as you know, it's very cumbersome now. So, but yeah, I will, you know, get in touch with them and see what they want to do. I think I've gotten like 12 resources in the community that have stuck with me. Like I said, we're going to meet on February 16th, I think is the date. I like to keep them involved. We do it through Zoom, and Evan Grady down at the EMS Center helps me with that, and we meet over there in their meeting room and do that. So I keep them involved. And the reason I made it my advisory committee is that makes them vested, too. So, I've got treatment providers, I've got employers, I've got employing agencies, all types of things that come together. RCC is on board with that, so that we can provide the resources once we have these callers. Because what happens with folks who get out either post-release or on probation is, they come see an officer, he or she does their paperwork, they schedule them for an appointment with an agency to get help, and it's four weeks down the road. Well, they inevitably miss. They come back to see the PO, they jump on and schedule for another appointment, another four weeks. So long story short, it gets about 12 weeks, three months, and nothing's happened. So with the call-in, when we have our resources there, you don't have that excuse, because all you got is to turn around and go to the back of the room, and that resource is right there. And we require the folks to at least speak to that resource. You may not need that resource, you may not need employment, but you're going to speak to them out of respect. And so, we sign off on it, so that way, we can get the folks involved without that red tape and those excuses.
Good discussion. Any other questions? Thank all of you. Thank those who go here tonight, and thanks for your help. Thank you, Andy. Okay, our voluntary ag district. Kenny, you're up. Kenny Schering is our Cooperative Extension Director.
Chairman, board members, thank you for allowing me to speak. For everybody at home, I just want to make sure that they know that we've transitioned from talking about criminals to agriculture people, okay? Just to make sure we're transitioning there. We're talking about good people again, right? So, yeah, I'm here to give a report about the voluntary ag district. Thank you for the approval for the board members and your consent agenda there. And here to say, in a slow year, we did or were able to add 283 acres to the voluntary ag district. And voluntary ag districts simply is recognizing the land as agricultural land. That they get a sign on their land, on their property, that shows folks driving by or in the area that, yes, this is a working agricultural land, and that's what you can expect coming from that land. So, it's a way to give notice to the landowners there and ag workers. Also, since I have some time on agenda, thought it'd be good to introduce our newest employee with the Extension Service, Annie Mills. Annie is our horticulture agent, and she started in November. Annie, come and introduce yourself and tell them a little bit about some of the programs you've got going already.
Hi, everyone. My name is Annie Mills. As the Horticulture Agent for Randolph County, I support programs and education for commercial horticulture operations. So that includes landscaping businesses, fruit and vegetable farms, greenhouses, nurseries. And I also work with consumers to educate them about horticulture. Part of my responsibilities include organizing and training volunteers for our Master Gardener Program. I also work with other projects related to local foods. I'll be working with the farmers' markets, doing growers- doing grower certifications for the Piedmont Triad Farmers Market and the Ashboro Farmers Market. And I also work on the Visit NC Farms app, recruiting growers to join that app. That's a North Carolina Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services initiative to promote farms in North Carolina. We have over a thousand growers and agricultural businesses listed on that app. If growers are interested in joining that, they can contact our office here in Randolph County.
Thank you. Good to have you.
She's already jumped in and started. If you don't believe it, go to our website and look at all the classes she's offering coming up in February and March. You probably send it on our social media. She's doing a backyard garden, sets of courses on herbs and natural plants and habitats. And it's just amazing what she's already jumped in and started doing, even in the midst of our slowdown in our COVID adjustments. So thank you for allowing us to be here. Thank you for the support you give to our office and to the producers in the county. Thank you.
Kenny, what's, what's the difference in enhanced and regular districts?
The enhanced, there's a, a larger timeframe involved with that. The voluntary ag district, just a plain one, you can take that in and out if, if something's divided. But the enhanced district, there's a time commitment attached to that program. And it's not as popular or is, or as visible as the enhance, as the regular one. But there's a, there's a time commitment, or you have to have it in for X number of years. I think that's a ten-year thing, if that's I remember. You remember Dave?
I think, I think that's right. It's just basically a commitment on behalf of the landowner, that there's only so much development you can, that can be allowed during that time period. Otherwise, you're committed to a ten-year period with a regular voluntary ag. It's not that type, that long a commitment.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Other questions?
I noticed that two-hundred-and-eighty-three acres, and I know because of COVID and everything, that process has also slowed up a little bit. I know they met in December. Does that include the December?
Yeah, that's included these December ones. Yeah.
I know there's several deep anxious to get that taken care of.
We're working on those signs. We're working on the signs.
Thank you, Kenny. Good to have you tonight.
Thank you.
All right. Our next report is our Child Futility Prevention and Child Protection Team Annual Report. Susan Hayes, our Public Health Director, and Tracy Murphy, our Social Services Director. Susan, tell us what ages, didn't it change a while back?
Say it again.
What ages?
What ages for child?
What ages does this, does this cover?
Zero to eighteen.
Eighteen?
Mm-hmm. Um, so, good evening. We, we do this once a year in accordance with the North Carolina General Statute 143-576-1A2. Each county within North Carolina has a Child Futility Prevention Team. We meet to identify gaps where children have died, and the team is made up of a number of individuals. You can see on the back of the report that I gave you where some of these folks come from. In addition to public health and social services, we have law enforcement, we have a physician. We also have folks from the school, Guardian Ad Lighton, Sand Hill Center, EMS, Juvenile Justice, Highway Patrol, Mental Health and Family Crisis Center. This, when we look at cases, we are looking at deaths that happened in the previous year. So the cases we reviewed in 2020 were cases of deaths for the year 2019. And of those deaths, we reviewed, five were perinatal conditions, three were related to congenital, congenital birth defects, three were related to illnesses such as viral infections or cancer, seven were related to motor vehicle accidents.
Wow.
Seven were related to unsafe birth, unsafe sleep conditions. And so for a total, we, we had twenty-five child-related deaths last year, or in 2019.
Would COVID have been included in these numbers? Well, this is back to nineteen, so that's, that's probably.
Yeah. So when we do our 2021 reviews this year, we'll be looking at deaths from 2020.
And COVID could be?
Very likely, yes, it could be. And that would be those illnesses. So when we reviewed all of these deaths, we, we did not find any gaps we're missing. What we did want to do, though, was understand more about the issues. Brandon Baker, who is our Highway Patrolman on our team, we asked him to come and talk to us about situations where children die. That year in particular, we had, of course, seven, but that was unusual, that we have seven children who died in automobile accidents. And what we know about that is when you look at children who die, typically, most of them die because they weren't restrained in the car. So it's an unsafe situation in the car related to the seatbelt or the car seat. About fifty-nine percent of the time, we know that children are not put in car seats correctly. At Public Health, we have, we are the coordinators for the Safe Kids Program for Randolph County. We do a lot, a lot of education about car seat safety. We provide car seats for individuals who are not able to afford a car seat. And we give them education about how to, to put their child in a car seat. We may even meet somebody at a, say, the hospital or a doctor's office, because they don't have a car seat and don't know how to put it in properly. We have, as Safe Kids, we have multiple entities who participate in that with us. A lot of law enforcement and fire departments have certified car seat installation people. So we do spend a lot of time on that. Thirty-seven percent of children who die in car crashes are unrestrained. So again, this is a message we need to get to parents and family members, that if you put a child in a car, they need to be in a car seat. And they need to be in a car seat that's installed properly. You know, oftentimes, I can remember of one situation, the individuals weren't going very far down the road. So, you know, they didn't think that it was that big of a deal. But it is a big deal if you put a child in a car. They need to be in a car seat, or if they're old enough, to be in a seatbelt. We also have spent a lot of time on unsafe seat, unsafe sleep environments. We continue to provide pack and plays for families who don't have a place to put a baby. We do lots of education about how to put a baby to bed, what a safe sleep for, position for a child is. When I had my son, you were supposed to lay the baby on, on their side. Now it's back to sleep. You put babies on their back to go to sleep. You don't lay them on their side. Don't lay them on their stomach. But they, you lay them on their back. So that is something we spend a lot of education on. We do continue to provide those pack and plays. And we support the Books for Babies Program that we, we partner with the Partnership for Children and Randolph Hospital. And we buy hard books for their Books for Babies Program that talk to mamas and daddies about safe sleep, what safe sleep environments are, and how you put a baby to bed. And it's called back to sleep. So those are the things that we've done this past year with our Child Futility Prevention Team. So any questions?
If I could just point out, I went back to look at, this was for the year of 2019. I went back to last year to look at the report for 2018, and there were only eighteen fatalities, child fatalities during 2018. So that has gone up to twenty-five.
Yeah.
Which, you know, that's seven children.
Yeah.
And then that year, in 2018, only two were the result of car accidents. And in 2019, that had jumped up to seven out of twenty-five. And then in that year, there were no deaths for unsafe sleep. And then in 2019, that figure has jumped up to seven.
Yeah.
So, so it sounds like, you know, that you're doing some good work there, and that you're working with, closely with community partners, see your others, that are aware of situations where families may need education or help or support. So I like seeing that.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hey, Tracy.
I have heard two words consistently tonight that make me very, very excited in the line of work that I am in. I have heard the word partnership, and I've heard it many, many times this evening. And I've heard prevention many, many times this evening. And again, in the business that I am in, those two words excite me beyond belief, because they make the lives of our children in our community better. Last month, I talked about the pandemic and how it shines a light on those areas in our community that are strong, but also shines a light on those areas that need support. The Community Child Protection Team and the Child Futility Prevention Team, we work in partnership. We think through system improvements that prevent child fatalities, and we identify systemic deficiencies and gaps in child welfare and the community that assist us in making sure that our children have a safer life with free of abuse, neglect, or dependency. This year, the Community Child Protection Team reviewed ten cases for children that are in the care of Department of Social Services. In those ten cases, we'd had issues such as parents who struggled with substance abuse, parents who struggled with behavioral health issues, children who struggled with mental health issues, sexual abuse and physical abuse. Unfortunately, some of the cases reviewed had all of those combined issues. For the past year, even families with adequate resources have been struggling. They've experienced increased stress, worrying about health, dealing with unemployment, and financial concerns, and supporting school-aged children with their virtual learning. If regular families and regular family and regular communities have challenges, how much more challenges are our marginalized families and children? We already know the current realities we face living with the pandemic has exacerbated and sometimes covered the full gamut of these issues until they boil over like a keg. Specific gaps that I've mentioned in our community and that you'll see on our report include limited substance abuse treatment in our community, limited behavioral health services for both the youth and the parents. And always, something that we work to improve is increasing public awareness. Child abuse is preventable if we all work together to prevent it and share partnerships so that we can do better. Nothing is more important in preventing child malt treatment than our community partners. District Attorney Gregson was here earlier. One of the things that Department of Social Services had done, has done specifically this year is to improve our communication with our law enforcement partners and the District Attorney's Office specifically. We've met with them three times this year, sharing policies and talking about protocols, seeing where we are the same and where we're different, and how we can partner to make sure we have better outcomes for children. We have worked to increase awareness and open communication with our other law enforcement partners. Sheriff Sebold and his team, we provide training and in-service when they have in-services with their officers, and also with Ashboro Police Department. We work real hard to have open and clear communication between Department of Social Services and our 911 communication system. They're on the job 24/7, as are we, and we need their partnership. DSS also keeps a very good relationship with both of our school systems, our city school and our county school systems. And again, we have worked really hard to improve communication with all of our partners, and we can't do the job that we do without them. Again, child abuse is preventable, and we can't do that without partnerships. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
I don't have any particular questions, because I know your jobs are, I don't know how you do what you do. But I want to say that I think that Randolph County is extremely, I guess, I don't want to use the word lucky, because lucky is not it, but Randolph County is extremely fortunate to have two ladies that have the passion that you have and do the things you do. And I'm glad to hear that, that you have the partnerships that you do have. Again, Mr. Chairman, we are, we're extremely fortunate to have these people that are actually on the front lines. And for one, I tell you, I don't know how you do what you do.
These two ladies and our EMS folks, our guys down at the jail have been at the forefront with this whole COVID nineteen pandemic for a year now. And their work has to go on every day. And I know some of Tracy's folks see the, the worst of the worst and conditions that they work in.
Thank you so much for your kind comments. We certainly could not do the work that we do without our team members, who do work extremely hard and long. I know Susan would join me in saying that our team makes us all better and makes our community better. So we'll pass your comments on to them. Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you, ladies. Now and every day. Amy, our public hearing on the road closure?
Okay. Well, as you will remember from last month, I had received a request to close an unnamed unbuilt street. The request was submitted by Larry McElrath. The property on one side of that street is owned by Ruth McElrath, Mr. McElrath's mother, and he plans to build a house there. If you can look at the picture that Will has put up, I highlighted the unbuilt street in yellow, so you can see. It was depicted on a plaque recorded in 1953, but it was never actually built. The procedure for closing a public road or easement is governed by North Carolina General Statute 153A241. The first step requires that you adopt a resolution declaring your intent to close the street and calling for a public hearing on the question. You adopted this resolution at your meeting last month. In accordance with the statute, notice of the public hearing was published once a week for three successive weeks. The statute further requires that notice has to be sent to each property owner adjoining that street. I sent it to, I've listed people. In your memo, I actually sent it to one other person, and I misspoke in the memo. So I sent it to the properties on both sides of the road, including Mr. McElrath's mother, even though he's the one that made the request. And I sent it to the property that the street dead ends at. Okay? So they've received notice of your resolution and of this public hearing. And furthermore, a notice of the closing and the public hearing was posted in at least two places along that unbuilt street. I received a couple of calls from people because of where we had to post it. I think there was some confusion as to whether we were talking about closing Henry Road. And I explained that to people, that it's the unbuilt portion. So tonight is the public hearing. After all, interest- After all, interested persons are allowed to voice their views. If you find that you are satisfied that closing the street will not be detrimental to public interest and will not deprive any individual of access to his property, you may adopt the attached order of closing the street, and then I'll file a certified copy of that with the Registered Deeds Office.
Any questions of Amy? Okay, we're going to open our public hearing for the purpose of considering closing an unnamed street. Is there anyone here tonight who wishes to speak to the issue? Please come forward and give us your name and address so we can make proper notations in our minutes. Thank you.
Oh, hi, nice to meet you.
I'm Larry McElrath, Mr. Chairman and Board members. I'm from Mecklenburg County. I've been in Mecklenburg County for 25 years. I grew up here in Randolph and worked a lot here in Randolph before going other places. And so I retired recently, and I'm interested in coming back to Randolph. And that's why I'm interested in this small, very small property. And going from 11 acres on Lake Wiley to here for a half acre, that's major downsizing, okay? And that's what I'm trying to do. And then I realized that this road was adjacent to the property. And I never dreamed that it would be this hard to close a road that never existed. But anyway, that's what it's all about, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you for your patience tonight with us. Is anyone else here who wishes to speak to this issue? Okay, hearing done, we will close the public hearing and come back to the commissioners. Do you have any other questions of Larry or of Amy? Or we'll entertain a motion to adopt an order permanently closing an unnamed street.
I'll make a motion to adopt the, to adopt the order permanently closing the unnamed street.
Second.
All right, I'm going to read into the minute, now therefore being ordered by the Randolph County Board of Commissioners, that the above referenced unnamed street be permanently closed and that all right title and interest in its respective rights and ways vested in those persons owning lots or parcels adjacent to that section of the road or easement, and that a copy of this order will be filed in the Registered Deeds Office. Any other discussion? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those no. And it's closed, Larry. And come back to Randolph County.
Welcome home.
All right. Next item is our budget meeting schedule. That was in your agenda packets. Anybody have a question or want to change anything there?
Yes, I'll.
That doesn't mean it can't be changed later. This is the way it looks right now.
I guess the only change is the Sandhills would be during our regular meeting as opposed to with the school system.
Yes. Yep. All right. Do I have a motion to adopt the schedule? I'll make a motion. Motion by Paxton, second by David. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those no. And it's adopted. Next is our audit contract. Will?
Good evening, commissioners. As you are aware, our audit firm for a number of years has been Cherry Becker. And they have presented a audit contract for 2021. It's a 2.9% increase over what they charged in this past year. That includes also the Tourism Development Authority. It's very efficient to do both of them with the same firm. So if the board is interested in continuing to use Cherry Becker services, then I ask that you approve the proposed contract.
Do you have any reason for us not to continue with these folks? I think they kind of sped up a little bit for us on the hospital application last year, didn't Will best they could.
Yeah, we asked them to expedite a little bit so we could try to move that along. And they were very helpful with that. So it's, Commissioner McDowell knows, it's a niche market. There's fewer qualified firms to do it. So if we chose not to, we'd have to scramble, try to find another qualified firm.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we recommend them to be, to have the audit contract.
All right, the motion is that we continue with Cherry Becker under their new contract proposal. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, David. Any other discussion or questions? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those no, and it's approved, and you're up next, Will.
Thank you. Just a couple of items regarding our capital improvement plan. We've been pretty ambitious over the past few years. We had the addition for the detention center, and the board recently added the renovation phases. As the contractor was looking at things, was wanting to recommend that we go ahead and do the replacement of the HVAC roof on the existing jail at the same time. Makes it efficient, and it's something we're going to have to do anyway. But I think Paxton said that they can try to get the HVAC put in before the new roof is put on. That's the right order to do that. So it's an extra $100,000 that we would add to the project, $890,000 with regards to the budget. But that would complete the, what we intend to do down at the jail. That would give a total contract with the construction manager at risk of $37,372,146. That's from the very beginning till the final renovation stage.
All right, this is two items. First one is the budget amendment for the detention center, the project amendment.
Yep, the budget amendment would cover the HVAC and the roof on the existing jail and just add that to the cost of the project. If the board wants to do that, then adopt the budget amendment.
Any questions of Will?
Will, I don't know if you know this, but I guess that's 25-year-old roof. Is that what we're looking at?
It's the original roof, original HVAC, I believe. Paxton's here, but I believe it's the original.
I would say, you know, nobody likes to spend money on jail. But a big part of our COVID issues here in that detention center is when we've had to send prisoners somewhere else because we didn't have room for them. And they come back here for court, and they have brought the virus with them on a couple occasions. So. All right, do I have a motion? Motion to approve the project amendment number eight.
I'll move that we approve the detention center project amendment number eight.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion or hope? Further discussion or questions? Hearing none, those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those no, and it's approved. So the next one is to set a public hearing for the use of limited obligation bonds.
Right. We'd already planned to do the Ashboro High School renovation in the springtime, but with rates, the way they are and where we are in the detention center project, it's going to make more sense for us to go ahead and bundle both of those projects together in our spring financing. So at the March meeting, we'll have the public hearing and ask the board to adopt all the resolutions necessary to move the financing forward to go to the LGC in April. And that would finance both the Ashboro High School renovation and the detention center renovations. And that's the last big financing hopefully we'll have to do for a while.
Are there questions?
I guess I hope we don't get the money mixed up with a detention center and a school. That just doesn't sound kind of counterintuitive there. We don't want to.
Well, we got different accounts.
Yeah, okay, okay. I know.
All right, I have a motion to set March the 1st, 6 o'clock, for a public hearing to consider using limited obligation bonds to finance the Ashboro High School and the detention center renovation projects. So move. Have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those no, and it is approved. Thank you, Will. Okay, Hal, do you have anything tonight?
As a reminder, we have a rezoning appeal next Monday night, beginning at 6 o'clock. And also, our planning retreat is February the 25th. People say, where are y'all going on a retreat? And I'm, we're going to the big room downstairs in the county office building. So that will be February the 25th, beginning at 1 o'clock.
All right. We also have a meeting with the school board, the Ashboro School Board, on the 11th.
Yes.
February 11th.
February 11th, Ashboro City. All right. Does any commissioner have anything? I think you got a copy of the.
Legislative goals.
Legislative goals that were sent out to everybody that we worked on a couple of weeks ago. That was quite an experience. And I'd have to say Ronnie Smith, he and Kevin Leonard make a good basketball coach because our halftime speech got it turned around. Our first day, we got one done out of eight plus the federal. And we got one from 9:00 in the morning to 1:00 in the afternoon, we did one. The next day, we did all the rest of them in less time.
I listened in the second day. I'm glad I wasn't listening the first day.
No, it was pretty boring. And I think it's people that, well, number one, it was new county commissioners, never been a commissioner before. Number two, lots of commissioners had never been involved in the legislative goals process before that time, and the desire to be seen on Zoom. Everybody becomes a comedian and a public speaker, so, but we got through it. All right.
Could I just give a quick update? We've had a lot of questions and complaints from citizens about getting through the COVID line, phone line to sign up for, or the vaccine, the COVID vaccine line, to sign up for their vaccines. And we hear those frustrations, we understand those frustrations. We've looked at a lot of other counties and what they're doing. And everybody's getting the same complaints we are because there is nothing out there that is going to meet the demand for the vaccines right away. So today, there was a Zoom that took place. It was a result of collaboration with Randolph County Public Health and our hospital, Randolph Health, to look at a system where citizens can sign up online. You will not get a call back right away, okay? So don't think, don't say I signed up and nobody called me, you know, it's been two weeks. No, you may not get called for six weeks. I mean, there's not much vaccine coming in when you look at the demand. And now, second vaccine, second doses are being given. So you have first doses being booked, being scheduled and given, and you have second doses that need to be administered as well. So it's a process. But this system is one that, that once you get your data entered, it was approved by NCDHHS. And it kind of parallels the CVMS system that's being used for COVID management in North Carolina. And once the data goes in, then that data will be shared with other providers in the county who are giving vaccines. So everybody would be working from the same list once that's, once that's in place. So, you know, your name and information would go in, and if Randolph Health gets 500 vaccines, then they would pull from those names. If Randolph County Public Health gets 600 vaccines, they would pull from that list. So you already have your data there. For right now, for this week, we will continue to have call-in, Susan, for the weekend?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So for this week, Randolph County Public Health will be taking calls for vaccine that we get. The state has said that we'll get the same amount for the next three weeks. And you know what they say, a bird in the hand is worth two in the bush. So we like to wait until we have it in hand to make those appointments because anything can happen. But we've gotten 600, so there should be 600 coming. And then they sent us an extra hundred. And I have to say that in talking to our Senator Dave Craven, Dave has been having some conversations with people in NCDHHS, and they have been complimentary about Randolph County Public Health and the effectiveness of what's being done. So there's nothing perfect out there. You know, we are doing our very, very best. And I assure you that your providers in Randolph County are working together to try to meet the needs of our citizens as quickly and effectively as we can. But the fact that the state unexpectedly sent us an extra 100 doses would bear out what Dave said, that they recognize that our Public Health Department is doing a good job under the weight of, you know, of the vaccine distribution. So keep trying. We will get everybody vaccinated. If you have an appointment, if you got a vaccine at the zoo that was vaccine from the hospital, if you went on one of those two days, you'll go on one day. Whatever time you went, you'll go at that time on the 6th, which is a Saturday. So if you went on Sunday at 2:00, then you'll go on Saturday, the 6th, at 2:00. Okay? So did I get all that right, Susan? And for your benefit, Mr. McDuffie stated when he shook my hand that he has gotten his second dose now and that he's most appreciative. Everything was very well done, very professional, and he appreciated the services of Randolph County Public Health.
Thank you. So we can, we can tell people that they can call tomorrow morning to the Health Department to that number at 8:00, 8:00 or 8:30? And are there appointments available?
No, not until we get the vaccine. And the vaccine does not come in until Wednesday or Thursday.
So don't call tomorrow.
No, don't call tomorrow. You'll get a recording that says all appointments are full because we don't have any more vaccine.
Yeah, let me just clarify a little bit.
That's a good question.
Yeah, it is a good question. We get notified. So for the vaccine that we got this week, we were notified last Thursday how much vaccine we will get. On Friday, we opened our appointment line at 8:30, and by 4:30, we had taken 700 appointments. So all of our appointments are taken for this week. Now, this Thursday, we'll get notification again from North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, and they will tell us that we'll probably, I'm expecting 600 doses because they've told us that last week we would get 600, but we got an unexpected 100 more. And then this week, we should expect 600, and next week, we should expect 600. So that's our three-week allocation, and that could change. So what we will do this week is when we know that we're getting 600 doses on Thursday, we will open our appointment line on Friday. And I do echo, I understand it's awfully frustrating. I know it's extremely frustrating. We are working, Michael Rowland is helping us work through this best way to do something online. You know, if we do something like what we've talked about today with the hospital where people go in and fill out a form and that gives us their information, essentially what we're doing is putting them on a waiting list. And then we have to go back and work that waiting list. When we first got vaccine, the very first day, the end, last week in December that we got vaccine, we opened our appointment line at 10:00. By mid-afternoon, the lines, the phone lines had crashed. We crashed the entire phone lines for the county government system. We had 2,000 people we had to call back. And when you do that, it's very, very hard and very labor-intensive. And I'm sure there are probably people that we missed trying to reach those folks that we took names from. So we are working really hard, and we hope that if we can come up with something where folks can go online, fill out a form, I think the hospital is trying it again this week. You know, they You know, they've got, I don't know, 150 doses they're going to offer a couple of times, I think, if I've got that right, and I may not, so don't quote me. You know, when we do a clinic, we've got staff doing 500 people a day because not only are we doing first doses, we're doing second doses too. Now, I want to remind you, when we did the zoo clinic, we did about 900 and something that first day. That was public health and the hospital and EMS, and the sheriff gave us support that day. We've got clinic, I've got a clinic of nurses right now that are doing 500 on their own all day long, and it is hard. They do an outstanding job. I will put them up against anybody in Randolph County or North Carolina for that matter. They are phenomenal, and it is not easy. It is extremely complicated. Managing the vaccine is complicated, managing the appointments, and making sure people are taken good care of. So they are doing phenomenal work, and we do sympathize with folks who are frustrated and aggravated, and it is hateful, and I agree with them. We will work our hardest to find a better solution for what we're trying to deal with right now, and we do hear their concerns. And I want y'all to know, as our commissioners, I want you to know that we are working on that, and we understand, and it is not our choice for people to get aggravated and upset, and not at all. We want to fix it, and we are, we are working on that.
And Susan, those 600 or 700, whichever, those are all first-time shots?
Yes. When they give us our...
You don't have to have that for the second shot?
Don't have to have, no. They send us, whatever they send us for the first doses, they mirror for the second.
But that's all first-time shots?
Yes, sir.
If I could reminisce just a minute, you can go ahead and say...
Okay.
I've got a question.
Sorry.
My curiosity. When you're getting people in, and they're coming in, there, I know that the vaccine has to be kept cold, I mean, frozen. There's a timing, I assume, as you're going down to be able to have it available. Does that elongate your problem as well?
It's a part of the complexities that we're dealing with. The first vaccine that we got in December was the Pfizer vaccine, and it is the vaccine that is, requires ultra-cold storage, so minus 80 degrees Celsius. You have to thaw it at room temperature for a certain amount of time. You can only draw, you can't draw it up too far in advance because if, once you draw it up, it's got to be used. And that's the same thing with the Moderna vaccine. It is, has to be frozen, but not as cold as the Pfizer, and since that first allocation, what we've been getting is the Moderna. So since then, we've gotten Moderna. But still, the complexities are there in terms of, and I want to tell you something, we've got, we've got a young nurse, and I'm going to brag on her a minute. She's a young mother, she has two small, small children at home. She is building a house, and she is at work by 7:00 every morning, and she is the last one to leave, and she has to count every dose of vaccine, and she runs that clinic that people drive through every day. She knows who's there, who's working it, how many appointments we've got to have to make sure we don't lose any doses, what time that vaccine's got to come out. She has to count every dose of the vaccine once it comes out, and it can't be drawn up too early. And she is outstanding, and her name is Lindsay Saunders, and I want to compliment her in public because she has done a phenomenal job. So we've got nurses like that, and I'll just be, I don't even know that Lindsay's 30 years old yet, to tell you the truth. I mean, these are people that could be my children, but they are, they are outstanding. They are the best you will find, and Randolph County is about as fortunate as they can be to have these folks working for them. So thank you for that question.
Susan, have we, are we stretching the doses? You know, I heard on one of the TVs, they was talking about going from five to six out of the little vial.
Yes, yes, anytime we can, we do, so with the...
But that's not, that's not a factor in the 600, for example?
No, no. With the Pfizer vaccine, it comes five doses per vial. If, sometimes you can get six doses out of that. With Moderna, they're 10, it's 10 doses per vial, and you can get 11 out of that most, most times. And again, that's, I've watched, Tara has been helping Lindsay because she, she needs support, and so Tara will help her try to manage the appointments during the day and for the week. And it wasn't long ago she was trying to do all this by herself, and you know, you can't, she just can't do that, and Tara has done an outstanding job helping her with that. And I've watched Lindsay sit there and go, okay, I know we've gotten this many extra doses out of the vials I've got right now, you know, we've got people who've emailed us, who've called us, we've got a list of names because they've emailed us or called us, and we'll go call and say, can you be here in an hour? Can you be here? You know, sometimes she'll, she'll know, I've got the right equipment, I can get six doses out of these vials, or 11 doses out of these vials, so I'm going to add 25 more appointments. I mean, it is extremely complicated what they're, what they are doing. So yes, we are able to do that.
Good. All right, other questions?
I wanted to just say, I want to reminisce just a minute. Stan always, he was always laid back, easygoing, what you see is what you get, at work, at home, sitting up here, wherever he was, he was the same. But there was one thing that upset him, and that was if people were rude or unkind or if they were ungrateful. He hated ingratitude. And they tell me that one day he was at work in the back at Prevost, and someone came in with a prescription, and this was before we had 24-hour pharmacies, and Prevost was the latest game in town. And so whatever this was, was something that could not be found anywhere else in town, and they had come to Prevost. And I don't know what the problem was, but the person that brought it in was upset, and they were railing on the pharmacist who was out front. And so they tell me that Stan walked out, and he just very calmly picked up the prescription, and he walked around the counter, and he handed it to the man, and he said, we're not filling this for you. And the man was taken aback, and he said, well, why not? And he said, you don't talk to my people that way. And the guy said, well, nobody else in town has this prescription. And he said, well, you should have thought about that before you talked to my staff that way. Now you're going to be driving to Greensboro. And that was all that was said. Now, I tell that story because all of the providers who have vaccine are getting a lot of flak over the phone from our citizens, and I understand our citizens are frustrated. But I'd just like to say to anybody who might be listening, and to those of us that are here, to please encourage people to be patient and be kind, because it doesn't matter if you're talking about Randolph Health, it doesn't talk, it matters if you're talking about one of the other providers, doesn't matter if you're talking about Randolph County Public Health. I'm hearing stories about how rude and unkind people are on the telephone. Don't do that. Be kind, be patient, rein it in, we're going to get there.
Thank you, the story. All right, any other commissioner comments? Okay, Commissioner Allen, do you have a motion for...
Chairman, I make a motion we enter a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.11A4 to discuss matters relating location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body, including agreement on tentative list of economic incentives that may be offered to the public body in negotiations with the purpose of discussing competitive healthcare activities by or on behalf of Randolph Health, which discussion is privileged and confidential pursuant to North Carolina General Statute Section 131E-97.3 as is permitted by North Carolina General Statutes Section 143, 318.11A1.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those no. Thank all of you tonight. There won't be any business conducted after this public hearing, so this is informational only, so I'm sure there'll be more to follow that will be public. So thank all of you again. Those of you that are viewing from home, thank you for being with us also tonight, and we will properly adjourn when we come out of closed session.